Oh, okay. So.
If you have to, excuse yourself to go out then.
Yeah, that would be the only thing I would embarrassingly have to tell you.
Are we on? Okay, good evening. This is the February nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen Planning Board meeting in Meeting Room One. If we could please stand, pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we start, I'd just like to, uh, to, uh, this is Kevin Robinson. He's a new, went from our alternate member to a full-time member of the Planning Board. Just like to congratulate him on that.
Congratulations.
And we'll go on to new business this evening, which is, uh, first thing is a sign permit for Wayne Tolber Insurance.
Wayne, you want to come up to the mic? Uh, Mr. Chairman, you'll see in your packet an application and a beautiful little sign. This is a directional sign. Tolber Insurance is where Dr. Spivak, the dentist is, and big signs by designs there.
It used to be there.
I think they're there again, aren't they?
He just moved.
Oh, he did again. He moves so much, it's like, I don't know who he's running away from, but, um, anyway, they're looking for three directional signs. I don't know if you have anything else, Wayne?
No, I think that's pretty much it. I mean, you have the, um, and what you have there is the picture of the sign. The spots where we're looking to get the sign. We're either, we're either gonna do one or, I mean, uh, either two or three. I'm not sure of this. Definitely want to do the one where signs by design sign is right now on fifty-eight, right at the corner of fifty-eight and, perch, not Forest Street. And then on the other side of, by Lyndon Street, so coming from that direction, it would point up toward that way.
And this is the size of the sign? Actually, the, that's what, oh, what's the size of the sign?
It's an eighteen, eighteen by twenty-four.
Eighteen by twenty-four. So it's gonna be, yeah, about double the size, or triple. Anybody have any questions?
No, Mr. Chair, I'm pretty good with this. Mr. Tolber's been in town forever and a day. Um, I think it's a great idea that, that we finally have this in front of us, so that way we can get, get a little bit more business towards the office where he's at, even though, and I know all the local people probably know where Mr. Tolber is, but, as he was expressing earlier, that, uh, people from out of town, it would just be a little bit more helpful. So I think it's great.
Anyone else have any questions about the sign? So you said these are gonna be put in, they're gonna be, uh, installed on an existing square post, what's like a pressure treated post, or?
It's, um, it's unistrut square tubing.
Oh, okay. Oh, this, okay.
Good to have Chad on the board.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign application for Mr. Tolber. Uh, no lighting in the three locations as specified on the map.
So motion is, do I hear a second?
Second.
If motion is second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's unanimous.
There you go. Um, you don't need a building permit for these, so, um, I'll process it tomorrow and I'll mail you the application, but you can put them up anytime you want.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thank you very much. Take care.
Good night. All right, so we'll move on to, uh, receipt of plans form a South Main Street.
Yes, um, this is a retreat lot of Davison's on South Main Street, right near, um, right near, um, Mayflower Road. You'll see a deed in there that shows that it has not been altered since ninety-nine. And, uh, it meets the bylaw as far as frontage and far as lot size. I'm just asking you to receive these plans. They'll be in in two weeks through consideration of endorsement. Usually at this time, I gather, any questions or concerns you may have, so that they're, they can come prepared in two weeks.
Can they create a lot B check?
Lot B, correct. Lot A, well, Lot A and B is one lot today.
Right.
Right.
Did we have, um, was this part of that big subdivision that we had previously done?
It was all the way on the right. They were using it, I think, for emergency access, if I recall. Council, I know he's not representing them on this, but he did on that subdivision.
Bowman's Point.
That's it. Thank you very much.
I've not seen this plan before.
So this is where they were kind of come out here with an emergency access, and they were gonna try to have a couple lots here, if I recall.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then, you know, and then you were shrinking it down, and they abandoned this piece, and then the whole thing went away. And that's for Chad and Kevin. This was a large subdivision.
But Outback Engineering was the firm that did Bowman's Point, so if they come in when the actual, matter is before you again, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
I just want to check on, um, just through you, Mr. Chair, Jack, I want to check on this and see if this wasn't part of the, that, that design that was done by, um, Bowman's Point? Wasn't there a bunch of lots that were done? I remember this briefly in my head.
Yeah, they withdrew without prejudice.
They withdrew the whole application for Bowman's Point?
Yes.
And then the zoning, the zoning, in a way.
Got it.
The protection.
Yeah.
I know, 'cause we're at the tail end of it, and I couldn't remember if it actually went forward or not.
No, you, you looked at the Etch A Sketch.
Perfect.
Well, good. Thank you, Rich.
Okay, so this will be on the agenda in two weeks, and you guys can ask those plans. I will tell him to be prepared to ask the status of that and put it in relation to that subdivision.
That'd be great. Thank you. Okay, so, uh, next is, uh, uh, Landmark Auto Sales, fifty-eight North Main Street, discussion regarding, uh, the outdoor display of vehicles.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, before Carmine speaks, I have in your packet just the license he received to sell cars, and I would, if you wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind if Carmen kind of tells you a little history about how he got to where he is, if he was in front of a selectman. I also have a site plan, I believe you have.
I have one.
If you can share it.
Sure.
Um, if you look at what was previously approved by the planning.
I've seen this before.
All right, if you would like to, uh?
Uh, good afternoon. I'm Carmen Alonji from, uh, Landmark Auto Sales. Um, again, uh, you know, I got approval for a license for three vehicles, and that's my full intent. Uh, they're not to be in view of the street. And just leaving it at that, I just want to sell a couple cars here and there, and, you know, I got a license for three cars, and that's all I want. As far as I'm concerned, I thought we were all set here.
Well, you hadn't been before, the Planning Board before with this.
I'm on the Board of Selectmen.
But you hadn't come before the Planning Board. I went by today, and I saw cars out on the left side of the buildings. I saw one car and had a for sale sign on it.
Yeah.
It was just, and it, it was in the parking areas that, uh, I remember when we had, uh, done the site plan before for the apartments. And there was a car there that, that was in one of the parking places that was supposed to be for the apartments.
We put that addition on, and I believe it was about two or three years ago, uh, they requested a parking spot and a half for each unit. There's two units there. There's a total of three parking spots. Um, there's parking there for six vehicles, in addition to a handicap parking spot in front of the building. That gives us ample parking for the, uh, for the proposed auto sales.
No, I don't remember. We'd, we'd have to go back and take a look, uh, just what we allowed for the parking spot. For those, uh, how many parking spots we, we, uh, had here that were allowed for the building. Of course, we went through the whole thing. There was parking for Buildings A, B, and C for the businesses and for the apartments. And, uh, I just kind of like to, to see an account of those, uh, you know, parking areas, to make sure that you have enough out there.
Yeah, we got ample there.
Now, if you were gonna put the, the cars in the rear of the buildings, how are you gonna, they're, they're not to be displayed, then?
I have no intention of displaying any vehicles.
So, so you were gonna sell them by magazine or?
Internet sales.
Internet sales?
Yeah.
I have a question for you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, sure, go ahead, Will.
If, if in fact, we, I remember going through this site plan with you guys, and we did a lot of the calculations to make sure that there was more than enough parking and, you know, for the whole facility and stuff. If in fact you had three additional parking spaces that was on that side that were not accounted for, I gotta ask the question, why wouldn't you want to display them to kind of move them quicker?
Uh, I just wanted to put them there. Uh, you know, my, when I originally got the, issued the permit, it was just fair to be three vehicles. I never wanted it displayed to begin with.
Yeah.
However, when I went to go apply for dealer plate, the RMV did not recognize the internet-only license. Therefore, I need to have display. So that's why, that's why we're here now. Um, and that's why, that's why I started the pot boiling.
Kind of trying, kind of trying to help you out a little bit.
No, I appreciate it.
It's a new business coming and stuff. I think that if in fact that we had, uh, room there to accommodate that, I think that would be better for you, especially where we just lost Carver Auto Sales, had recently closed.
Exactly. I'm just trying to keep low-key, low-profile, and fly under the radar, and just do my own thing.
I guess, a little food for thought if you'd like to have.
I appreciate it.
Would like to help you if we could.
Uh, just like to, you know, just have three parking spots right there on the side of the building, and that's it.
Well, we could, we could do something like that.
Little direction. Mr. Chairman, the statute actually says, because I remember he was under this, the, uh, requirement for, um, residential above commercial. And it's only one parking spot per unit, the requirement, not one and a half.
Hmm.
Um, but I'm still con- confused, Carmine, and really, we're trying to help you, but I'm confused about, you're saying that they're not for display, but the chairman could see it driving by, so it is for display.
Uh, it's not directly on, located on the street. Uh, you really have to be looking for it. Uh, you know, it's down below grade and everything. I mean, you've been through the site many times, and, you know, um, you really have to be looking for it. You know, it sounded like, you know, a big red flag out there.
No, no. I mean, if your concern is that the parking spaces allotted or by statute for the entire plaza are met at the exact maximum or minimum, rather, um, then you might want to be of a concern.
Yeah, that's a different story.
If he has more than required, then there is no concern, in my eyes. But I don't know the answer to that.
I, through you, Mr. Chair, then I would suggest that we have Jack look up the actual decision that we had back when we'd done this. Find out what the count was, and if that's, if that's the issue, and that, and you guys were, um, accommodating more than what was actually required,
Yeah.
then I don't see any reason. But if, the only concern that we, that I would have in this is if those parking spots that you all, that you want to use now that are actually allocated to one of the apartments or something like that, now you want to use it for this other business, then I would, I'd say it would require to come in for a modi- minor modification in front of us to adjust that. So, so designate those spots for your, um,
Yeah, before we put that addition in, there was no parking there, period. Then once we put the apartment, when we always put the new addition in, connecting those two buildings, that's when we put in that parking. Now, there's six parking spots and plus the handicap spot.
Right.
And even though, like, Jack just looked up, it's one parking spot for residential. Uh, again, so there's ample there. It shouldn't be an issue at all.
If you want, Mr. Chair, I could work with Anthony to determine if he's at maximum. If he isn't, then I guess he's free to go, but if he is at maximum, then he's gonna have to come back to you and try to find two more spots.
Yeah, I think.
Or three more spots.
I think we, we spent, you know, a, a good amount of time with them going on this site plan and expanding it for the apartment aboves when they came in front of us.
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, for me to want to go for, for anything but maybe a minor modification, that, that is what I think would be the extent of it for me, but.
I, I think, to me, that would be fine. E- even if you could take one of these plans and just number up the parking places so that we could just see how many there were, and if we could, uh, you know, I've, I've seen that done before. And if you could just go through and, uh, find out how many parking spaces per, uh, building, um, that, for a minor modification, that, that would be fine. Wouldn't really.
We'll work, I'll work with that.
Even if you, even if you needed it, I, if you have more than enough, then we're good, but if you needed to designate just those three,
Yeah.
then I don't see any reason why we'd have to do anything other than just a minor modification, just to dot the i's, cross the t's.
Excellent.
You could even add some, you know, parking, if you had to, just add another parking space or two on the side there, that, that probably would be fine.
Yeah, no, I, there's not, I don't think there's gonna be an issue there. We'll tally them up and go from there, but it's not gonna be any issue at all, though. We have ample parking there, I know that for a fact.
So you're just gonna park the cars there, and you're gonna put a for sale sign, uh, like the one I saw there this afternoon, had a for sale sign in the window on the side of the car?
That's it, that's all I want to do.
That's what you plan on doing?
That's it. Fly under the radar. You know, I, we have plenty of people coming in through the daycare center, parents, whatever, looking for cars, and go around back, so that's it, and, you know, I do a lot of internet stuff, and that's it, that's all I want to do. It's my plan. I'm sticking to it.
One question, Mr. Chair, just, job, but you're not doing any maintenance on the vehicles or anything?
There's no repairs being made there in the facility. I'm keeping all the repairs done locally, and they're gonna be done by major impact on the street.
Perfect. So one business working with another one. Love it. Perfect.
Any other questions by anyone else on the board? All right, if you could, uh, come back.
We'll figure it out.
With those things.
Thank you, Carmine.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Carmine, you want one of these, so you can write on it, or?
Here with me, actually.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, if we could go on to, uh, the next appointment, which would be, uh, AD Makepeace Possible rezoning of Federal Road.
Um, I hope you've been reading all your emails. There's been a lot going on, but in your packet, and I know Council will go over this, or maybe Makepeace will, um, I put in their fact sheet, their map, their proposed zoning amendment, a confirmation from Ocean Spray, two traffic statements, and kind of an aerial, and also, I don't know if you've got this, Counselor, um, I have a rollback estimation from the, uh, assessment. I think that's all the information we asked, and hopefully they'll walk us through it.
Go ahead, Mr. Sir.
Richard, I'm Cirque for the AD Makepeace Company together with George Rogers and Jim Kane. We had a preliminary meeting with you, you'll recall, on January fifteen, and that was followed by a site walk on January twenty-eighth. And our marching orders were to provide you with certain information after those meetings. First of all, we've provided you with what's called a Carver zoning proposal fact sheet, which indicates in pertinent part that the estimated value of the proposed soil blending facility to be built on Federal Road would be five million dollars. And using the current commercial tax rate of twenty-two dollars and seventy cents per thousand, property taxes will be hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred per year. And Community Preservation Act fees represent another three thousand, four hundred annually. In addition, we provided you with a traffic analysis from the Nassin Associates, Inc., signed by Jeffrey S. Dirk. And, uh, that's dated February fourteen, twenty thirteen. And in pertinent part, it indicates that the level of increased traffic along the Federal Road corridor is relatively minor in nature and would not result in a material increase in motorist delays or vehicle queuing along Federal Road, Cranberry Road, or associated intersections along these roadways. And with respect to the Ocean Spray Cranberry Company facility, the directional distribution of traffic during its operating season is the opposite of that which will be associated with the project, with approximately eighty percent of trips oriented to and from the north along Federal Road and twenty percent to and from the south. We also were asked to provide the estimated rollback taxes that would inure to the town's benefit if twenty-nine acres were removed from Chapter sixty-one A, and that was provided to you by Alan Blanchard, Director of Assessing. It was between twenty and thirty thousand dollars. We were also, uh, asked to provide a letter of support from Ocean Spray Cranberries, Inc., because the proposed rezoning, which would cover about three hundred and one acres, would include all of the Ocean Spray property at which the Cranberry Receiving Station is located. And we have a letter to that effect dated February fifteen, signed by Randy Papadol- Papadellis, President and Chief Executive Officer of Ocean Spray, stating that Ocean Spray is in support of the proposed rezoning of three hundred point ninety acres on Federal Road, which will enable AD Makepeace Company, um, to apply for a special permit from the Carver Planning Board to construct and operate a soil mixing facility on its land. We also provided you with a surveyed zoning sketch showing the three hundred and one acres, that would be the subject of the rezoning, together with the legal description of the land. And, uh, finally, what I did was I incorporated that legal description into a proposed warrant article, which I sent to you, that would ask for what we're going to seek, which is mainly, namely, an amendment to the zoning map to change from RA to IA, the three hundred and one acres that are shown on the zoning sketch that I just referred to. And our purpose here tonight is to, um, seek, if you're so inclined, an agreement to sponsor this article at town meeting. But before we get to that, if you have any questions or comments, uh, we're here to try to answer your questions and, uh, to the best of our ability.
Mr. Chair, through you.
Yeah, go ahead.
I know, uh, thanks, Rich. I know during our site walk, during the time, we had talked about out at the site, the potential for doing a loop in there for the traffic flow. Did you guys look at that by any chance?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay.
We have multiple roads.
For the record, it's George Rogers, Senior Vice President of Makepeace.
Little bit ahead of the game on us. I mean, we're just talking about the article, but I, it's a question that I, I know that we had talked about on the site.
Yeah, we have, currently we have three roads coming in from the south, so we could go up one and come back the other without a problem.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I, I, I really don't have a problem with this. So, you know, I thought it was a good idea when we went out there and we walked the site and seen exactly what it looked like, and, you know, I think this is a great, um, great for some business in town. I don't see any major impacts to, uh, the community down there. I mean, we already have a, a processing plant down there now, so I think it's a perfect fit. Um, I'd like to see us sponsor this at town meeting. I think it's really a good thing.
Anybody else have any questions?
I agree as well.
Yeah.
It's good use for the land. It's nice seeing business.
On the, uh, on the site walk, yeah, we did see if you're standing on the street, you have the landfill to your right, and you have Ocean Spray to the left. Uh, this is, uh, way back. It, it's, this area's not even seen from the street. And I think it's a, it is a great use, uh, for this, uh, piece of property. So, um, I'd be very happy to sponsor this at town meeting.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jack.
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, I, I was very happy. I did ask the traffic engineer to do what we call a split, to know which way the traffic is going. And I particularly wanted to do that because if you recall, at the last meeting when they came in, we had Cranberry Village residents here on another issue, but of course, I got a phone call the next day, 'cause they wanted to know the impacts to their neighborhood.
Yes, sure.
So I was very happy, and I suspected that's what I would see, is that eighty percent of this traffic's going to where?
Yeah, it's going north, so it's not going to that direction.
Or west, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
And then I was also very pleased to see Ocean Spray join in. We get rid of the spot zoning issue. Plus, they should be zoning this. This is what they do. And so it just makes a lot of sense.
I think it makes it cleaner.
Yes. Um, the deadline for warrant articles is the twenty-eighth, and you don't have a, a meeting before then, so if you're gonna do something else, it's hard.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, um, sponsor this article at the upcoming town meeting for the rezoning of, um, this property. Um, as specific as in the, uh, document that was provided to us with all the specifics, and maybe also attached in the map. That's in a motion, sorry.
It's a motion.
Second.
The motion is second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Now the fun starts.
Now the fun starts.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the site walk.
I'll let you know about the hearing, and we'll also have to go in front of the selectmen, of course, and the whole.
My hands committed.
Yeah.
And if everything works out the way we'd like to, we'll be back here for the special permit, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Hey, George, uh, remember what I?
I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
All right, well, let's go on to other business. And, uh, the first of other businesses, the Office of Planning, Community Development, Secretarial Position, Discussion, and Possible Vote.
Um, I just thought either you or Will would like to talk about your discussion through the Town Administrator, and I know Will had a follow-up with him, but.
If I could, Mr. Chair, um, I'm sure everybody's aware of the needs of the department. Um, we went in front of the, the, um, Board of Selectmen last week. Last week, and there was a little bit of a discussion going on back and forth whether or not to, you know, fulfill this position. And just for a little back, a little bit of background, um, we've been without this position for quite a while. And, um, the need is great. Right now, we're very fortunate. We have people kind of pitching in and, and filling in, a total of forty different people, so. We're just looking for a little bit more consist- consistency. The discussion kind of left at the end of it was the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen had wanted us not to fulfill the position. He wanted us to stop. So that being said, we kind of reached out to the, um, Town Administrator through Jack. I asked him if he would contact Town Administrator, see if we could, we could sit down and talk about the situation, with the permission from our Chairman. We had a meeting, uh, that consisted of, um, myself, Bruce, uh, Jack Hunter, and, uh, Rick LaFond the very next day down the Planning Department. It was just to kind of like see where we go from here. I know that I was pretty adamant on, um, we need this position, and I wanted to move forward on this. And no disrespect to the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I just think that, um, you know, I, I know what our needs are, and I see the amount of flow that goes through the, the Planning Department, and, um, I didn't, I want to make sure that we're not gonna get caught, and we have in the past. And without consistency, without the proper staff, then we're gonna have a problem. So I expressed that position to the Town Administrator, and I guess we've come up to a, an idea of, if we can find, we've had many applicants for this position. It's a nineteen-hour position. If we can find somebody to fulfill in the interim, knowing that this position might not be funded at town meeting, um, that was going to be our charge, instead of going against the wishes of the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. So that was going to be our goal after that. I spoke with the Town Administrator the following day, um, which was on Friday before I left town. Uh, Thursday, excuse me. And I guess he had a brief conversation with the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Chairman, uh, O'Donnell obviously had heard that we had met, or there was an inclination that we were just gonna do whatever we wanted to, and that, that I don't think was our intent. I think we come up with a compromise. I think that, um, and I don't wanna speak for the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I think he knows the needs of this department. I just think that he's trying to be cautious on where money's being allocated. The, uh, indication that I got from the Town Administrator is that, um, we're gonna try to find somebody that might fill in for the interim. And, um, with the, with the knowing that, um, this position might not be funded at town meeting, um, along with some other ones. Um, the town's trying to look at all kinds of different assets and I don't know where that's all going, but my concern is the needs of this board, making sure that we're okay. I don't think I got anything else. You got anything to add to that? Did I forget anything?
Uh, no, I think you said that, well, um, all I can add to it is, is that our former secretary, um, thought that even in the fourteen or seventeen hours she had, that there was a, a lot of work to be done. And, um, I, I just can't see with the, the three to four people, um, there's, there's a lot of technical languages. And, and, and doing the notes for the meetings and everything, they're very well done. We're, we're lucky to have, uh, somebody that can do that. But it can be tough because of all the, the technical terms and everything that, uh, everybody has to understand. And just in a two or three or four hours a week, these people filling in, it, it's, it's, uh, a difficult thing to do. We, uh, we also, we have two programs going out of the office, uh, out of Jack's office. And, uh, for the neediest people in Carver, we have the Mortgage Assistant Program that Jack's always taken calls for. And, and we have a block grant program and, and Jack's writing, uh, a new grant. Uh, hopefully, we'll get a, another, uh, a grant for, to help more people in Carver. And by not having, uh, people here to staff the office and, and to help the people in Carver that really need, um, the assistance is, uh, is just not a good thing. Of course, Jack also has to do the, the Water Department too, that, and he get, he gets a lot of calls, uh, uh, to the office, uh, from the Water Department too. And, and to try to do that with, uh, all the other responsibilities. We, we just really need somebody in the office to, to help him out.
So, I think the goal would be is try, try to interview some of the people that, um, have applied. I think we've, we've agreed to let them know that it, it's possible it will not be funded next year. It's just an interim. I gotta agree with the Town Administrator. Um, it's gonna be tough to find somebody that's gonna wanna do that. We could be left with me taking the notes. Well, I've done it before. We've done, we've done very good with that. My scribble's terrible, so, um, it is what it is. I mean, I don't think we should let up the, uh, the charge, per se. I think that we go through the process. Obviously, the will of the people will determine who gets what, where, when, why, and how come. This position was fulfilled by the will of the people last year. So, I don't wanna go against what the, um, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen's decision is, but I also have to make sure that we understand that, and they understand our needs. And our needs are real. This is a very busy department, and as the economy turns around and gets a little better and better, which there are signs of that, the needs are grow, grow, and they're more and more. And I think that there are a lot of positions in this town hall that are very thin already and were won. Do you have anything else you want with that one, Jack?
Um, no, I'm grateful to hear this information. Um, at least we can hopefully hire someone in the interim. I don't know. I, we received fourteen resumes. I went through them before and now I've gone through them again. I actually had some other secretaries go through them. Thought that was important. To have to, uh, work with these people. Um, and I think we came up with a consensus of the top three or four. Whether they're willing to even interview, knowing that it's interim, I don't know. I, I think a co, well, I think all of them probably have jobs now. I can't remember everyone. Um, and whether they're gonna risk taking a job for four months is a big risk, so I, I don't know. But, uh, we got some good candidates, so. I'll, I'll talk to the Town Administrator tomorrow and, um, hopefully I can call them and set up interviews and, you know, Kim for the Water District, Darlene for you guys, and Maureen for me, really. I've been chipping in and then plus my intern, who I won't be leaving, obviously. But it's, you know, it's craziness. It's not a, not a very professional or economic way to run a department. I think you saw that right before the meeting today.
Yep.
So, um, I, I think this is a good interim solution to a, a situation that hopefully we can resolve.
Perfect.
I don't know. Did you think the Chairman, you talked to him more than me because I came late to that meeting. I mean, the Town Administrator, did he need a vote from you?
He didn't indicate that.
Okay. I'm good.
So, hopefully, I won't have to come in early to the meetings and fold plans and, and, uh, organize the, the stuff.
We've done that before.
But, um, I was happy to do that. Maybe we can get other people in early to help out. Until we find a, a full-time person. All right. Planning board notes.
I have nothing. Thank you.
I don't have anything this evening. Planners' notes.
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, the warrant deadline is the twenty-eighth. This is, what you just voted on is the only thing we have. We don't have any bylaw changes. So, that's good for, well, I was gonna say for Jean Bichard, but she's not here any longer, but for the Town Administrator's office. Um, I, I think I had told you about Norfolk Power, uh, withdrawing from interest in the property next to the landscaping, the Kelleher property. They're now back in the game. I talked to their broker last Thursday. And they are reevaluating how they can place their building or buildings on that property without public water and without sprinklers, or maybe with sprinklers. So, they're re, that, that has not died. I thought I had, that they indicated to me they were withdrawing, but they have not. I also was in discussions today with Agway on Plymouth Street, right near, um, the Plymouth Line. And, um, they are also looking at some properties. They're looking at the Williams property, which is on Forest Street and Wil, and Lillian. And they're also looking at the, um, Carver Auto Sales property. So, that might be a good use. They have to get out of that building. I think it's in two and a half years.
Really?
Um, and, um, I don't think I have any other information except that because I more or less staffed the Water Department, it was a crazy week last week. We, uh, with no secretary. We had some major issues going on with all the water systems. Towns, North Carver, with generators running five days, breaking down, water leaks, you name it. But we got through it and, um, to a lot of people's credit. That's it.
All right, thank you, Jack. Um, approval of minutes of the January fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Uh, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, correspondence.
I'm just, you'll see the thing I talked about on the, um, deadline for warrant articles. Oh, also, you'll see from the building inspector, I think if you recall, I sub, I submitted to you a complaint about, um, a zoning use on Plymouth Street, right on the Middleborough border. And we had the, the interim building commissioner inspect it, and this is his response. I'm not aware, it's been more than thirty days, and I am not aware of, um, Mister Whitworth appealing that, so I think that's a done deal. The other thing, and I'll pass this around, um, this is maybe for Kevin or, or Chad. We're having, um, this conference on advanced to, um, techniques for planning and zoning. We do have some monies available. If you wanna take a Saturday off and hang out with a bunch of planners. Planning, planners and planning board members, really. It's more planning board members at that. So, if you're interested, that's all I have.
All right, uh, next is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, we'll hear a second.
Second.
Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Fran, I'm friend.